Good morning, this is Chief DiAgostino. Can you go to the next slide, please? So our COVID-19 response cross-functional team. This team was created by our city manager Tommy Gonzalez, and it's to expand and enhance the communication and coordination with stakeholders while executing the plan as we attack COVID-19. The health and safety of our community is our priority, and as the task force reports out today, they will be briefing you on everything COVID. Mitigating and responding to COVID-19 in our region. Testing. As the cross-functional team will report out today, our testing efforts has multiplied during the month of May. Ninety-eight percent increase, as City Manager Gonzalez said. While we have been testing since the onset of this pandemic, we were under strict guidance or limitations through FDA and CDC. With the expansion of supply chain for testing, we are now able to offer testing to even asymptomatic patients through partnerships with the Texas military. We have other private-public partnerships to include Walmart, CVS, urgent care, and local testing laboratories to thank for this expansion that we've seen in the past few weeks. And the expansion is going to be broadened even more as we go into the next couple of weeks. I want to make sure that we recognize Border Rack for their efforts with the federal lane. They've been there since day one when we first set up the testing site, and we've seen extreme numbers of patients go through that area for testing. We also have the EPFD task force that's now coordinating with Border Rack, and they're going out to hotspots or potential clusters you may have. And so last week, they started in going out to all the nursing and the senior living facilities to do testing onsite of not only all residents, but also the staff that work in those locations. We also have to look at epidemiology. This division is usually a program of 10, which is more than enough to handle the daily needs of our community. But in the midst of a pandemic, it's hardly enough to provide the needed case investigations due to the increasing numbers of COVID patients in our community. From early on, we started the expansion, and we currently have just above 140 in the program with a phased approach to get us to upwards of 300. This is far above the national standards and what everyone else is looking at. Education and prevention. This task force has been instrumental since the onset when we were providing educational materials in public places such as in front of malls or big box stores to their more focused approach on targeting nursing or elderly care facilities to ensure the most vulnerable populations are protected. When we look at maintaining our communication with all stakeholders, the team, the CFT team, will work to ensure that we are maintaining constant communication with our stakeholders from the input that is gathered from our community and business partners to include the academic institutions and medical providers. We continue to provide up-to-date information, and later on, you'll hear about the enhanced dashboards that will be coming on live soon on El Paso Strong. Looking at how we develop our strategies to ensure the health and safety of our community. The creation of this task force to ensure the collaboration with all stakeholders, to ensure the community's health and safety is at the forefront as we look towards the future and the possibility of a second wave coming. The creation of the COVID Advisory Committee under Dr. Ocaranza. That's going to bring medical professionals from around the community in different functions of the medical society to give a phased approach in how we look and how we evaluate the data we have and how we move forward in protecting our community. Keeping the health of our community in mind as we plan for the future. As we've seen, COVID has a deeper impact on those with underlying conditions. Hypertension, obesity, diabetes, all prevalent in our community. These are what we need to focus on. This is the future of El Paso and how we attack this pandemic. Developing strategies to ensure economic vitality of our community. The city manager stated in previous city council meetings that this impact of economic crisis created by COVID-19 may be felt for 30 months. To ensure the El Paso businesses are able to recover, Economic Development has been working with various stakeholders to provide the assistance businesses need. We're also looking at coordinating with stakeholders to ensure that we are meeting the needs of our community. Nicole and her team with Community Development are working with numerous stakeholders to ensure we're able to respond to the community's vulnerabilities, focusing on human services such as rental assistance, homeless assistance, and food security. Preparing for the long-term response. Included in the presentation today is not only what we're doing to respond to COVID-19 emergency and the response to assist our community today, but what are we doing to prepare El Paso for the future. The coordinated efforts of this cross-functional team will be able to ensure that we are responding to the needs of our community during COVID-19 emergency and into the new normal as we face economic uncertainty and a new awareness of how pandemics change our lives. Looking at the org chart here before you, we have several topics we're going to cover. From our financial focus to our community vulnerabilities, how we've been handling logistics and the distribution of PPE and supplies to the community. We're going to start today's presentation going into the health focus. The health focus is going to be covered by Dr. Hector Ocaranza. He's our health authority for the city-county of El Paso. Dr. Ocaranza is a medical board-certified pediatrician. He's been with the Department of Public Health for over 12 years, and in that time, he also gained his Masters in Public Health. He has vast experience over the BioWatch program. He was a member during the Ebola preparedness of 2014, the TB outbreaks that we saw when we had over 700 infants exposed in 2014, and he was part of the 2009 H1N1 influenza pandemic team. He brings great knowledge to our city, to our county, and we'll move on to his presentation. Thank you.
Talk you there? Hello, can you hear me? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right. I'm sorry. Good morning, Mayor and Council. And as I said, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to present and give an overview of what COVID-19 has been in our city. It has been very challenging times, and definitely, we've seen a lot of COVID-19 ever since December, January 2020, where COVID-19 made its global presence, starting in Wuhan, China, and making its way all the way to the five continents. Next slide, please. So for everybody's knowledge, COVID-19 is the name of the disease that is caused by the SARS-CoV-2 virus. What is SARS-CoV-2 virus? It's named because it was named as Severe Acute Respiratory Syndrome Coronavirus 2. There is a group of three viruses that are of public health importance. And the first virus of importance that was named SARS, it was way back in the 2000s where we named the Severe Acute Respiratory Syndrome. Started also in the Far East and it made its way. We were able to prepare for some of that because of the possibility of becoming a pandemic, but fortunately, it didn't. The Middle East, later on, we saw the MERS-CoV, the Middle Eastern Respiratory Syndrome Coronavirus, which also had the possibility of becoming a pandemic, but fortunately, it was contained in the Middle East. And now that we see that the SARS-CoV-2, the causative organism of COVID-19, made its way all throughout the five continents, causing mortality, causing morbidity. And it has made us adapt and changed the way that we live up to now. We know that these coronaviruses, there's many strains of the coronaviruses. We see them in the winter season because it's the causative agent of many colds during the winter season. So initially, when people started listening about the coronavirus, it was very important to differentiate that there was just the coronavirus that was circulating in our community causing colds, and it was not the novel coronavirus SARS-CoV-2. There were some testing that was being done around the city that can detect many of these coronaviruses, at least two of the strains that can cause colds and flu-like symptoms in the community. But we didn't have the testing available to identify the SARS-CoV-2. CDC released the testing, and it was released to a very limited number of laboratories. Fortunately, El Paso was one of those laboratories because we belong to the LRN network, which is a very specialized network of labs that can handle those kind of viruses and bacteria that are of public health importance. One thing to note of importance is that the origins of the coronavirus, we believe that it was coming from some animals because we know that some of the coronaviruses, the SARS, jumped from an animal species to the human. The MERS-CoV, it is believed that it jumped also from camels to the humans. And we have now the SARS-CoV-2 that we have found in bats, and unfortunately, it transferred to the humans. That's how we have seen that after it jumped from species, from the animal to the human and having the human-to-human transmission, that can make the possibility of becoming an epidemic and ultimately a pandemic. Signs and symptoms of this disease, as we have seen over and over. The initial symptoms we saw, especially for the experience that we had in Wuhan, China, that most of the patients, over 80% of the patients would present with fever, and then it would present also with cough and difficulty breathing. It was of particular importance that a lot of the patients that were affected by this virus would develop severe respiratory distress, needing ventilatory support and supplemental oxygen. And unfortunately, the mortality due to this virus was extremely high. Over 50% of the people that would get infected would die. So that was worrisome to the World Health Organization, to the Chinese Centers for Disease Control, and to the world in general. We monitored closely how the virus was affecting individuals, but we were learning at the same time because we didn't have any experience as how the virus affects the body and why so many people was dying from this disease. This disease was affecting mainly the respiratory tract, but as we got to know the virus a little bit more, we can see that the virus affects many organs. It creates multi-organ failure, and ultimately, people passes away from the complications of the virus. Very important to know that the complications from the virus can happen to anybody, but it's of particular importance that there's at-risk groups that are most vulnerable, which we have heard, and we mentioned over and over, people with high blood pressure, people with diabetes, obesity, kidney problems. Those are the people that may suffer the consequences and the complications and ultimately dying from the coronavirus. How does the virus invades the respiratory tract? Or how does the virus attacks the body? It is fascinating. As you see in the picture that we have put there on the slide, the virus has some expressions from the surface, which are proteins that attaches to the respiratory tract cells. It is very particular receptors that are found in the lungs called the ACE2 receptors, and the virus from there attaches and starts invading the cells and ultimately the body. The body becomes viramic and starts replicating, the body to shed the virus, new virus, and that's the way that one person can infect the other person. As the body tries to fight the infection, and the body, it creates a lot of inflammatory markers, which in turn are the ones responsible for many of the pathologic features that we see in COVID-19. We see that all that inflammation and migration of white blood cells to those organs causes inflammation. A lot more inflammation can cause a lot more destruction of those organs and also causes a cascade of events that can lead to extensive clotting. And all these clots can happen anywhere in the body. That is one of the reasons why we see a lot of reports nowadays in the media that the clotting that happens in patients with severe COVID-19 infection develop and is also the main reasons why the patients end up in the ventilator and can die or succumb to the complications of this. We have heard also in the media, and many of us in the medical community are very concerned because many of the patients, once they develop the infection with the SARS-CoV virus, develop what we call inflammatory response storm, which it tries, and the body tries to fight the infection, but in the contrary, causes a lot of damage by releasing a lot of those inflammatory mediators. We know that once many of the organs get affected, we start having many other symptoms like the vomiting, like the diarrhea, like the body aches. And one of the features that is quite interesting that we haven't been able to understand very well is that a lot of these patients develop problems with smelling and tasting. Even though many of the patients cannot develop any fever, but it has seemed that probably one out of five develop only the lack of smelling or tasting. Next slide, please. How do we make the diagnosis of the COVID-19? Well, we have two ways of the diagnosis, but the most accurate way to diagnose an acute infection is by the PCR. PCR stands for Preliminary Chain Reaction, where we try to find pieces of the virus and express genetic material from the virus through this testing. The other way that we can test for the response of the body against the virus is doing antibody testing. There's two kinds of antibodies that we look for. One is immunoglobulin M, and the other one is immunoglobulin G. Immunoglobulin M also is an acute phase antibody that is produced right after the body becomes infected. It rises sharply, and then it goes down and disappears within a couple of weeks. It helps us fight the acute infection. But then, at the same time, the immunoglobulin G starts rising, and that's what gives the memory and the immunity against future infections of the virus. On the PCR testing or the molecular type of testing, where we look at pieces of the virus, we have the very complex testing that is done in laboratories like the Health Department lab or many other big laboratories or the labs from academic institutions such as the one at UTEP or Texas Tech. But there's some other rapid testing that looks at the molecular parts of the virus, and there's two of them that have been approved by the FDA. One of them is the Abbott machine, and the other one is Cephalite. Both of them give us a great information when we're dealing with patients and trying to preserve our personal protective equipment. The antibody testing, it has its place, but not just to diagnose acute infection. It's mainly to see the prevalence of the disease in the community since we know that many of the community members may get affected by the virus and never develop symptoms, or their symptoms might be very mild. And by doing that, if we test the community with antibody, then we're going to be looking at mainly immunoglobulin G and see how prevalent the virus has been in the community while doing at the same time PCR testing in all those people that are symptomatic, people that are considered to be at risk because they live in segregated facilities or maybe because they belong to at-risk groups or they've been exposed. The treatment, as we know, there is no treatment available to cure COVID-19. There are some medications that are being under investigation, and one of the most popular ones that we have seen is the Remdesivir, which is an antiviral medication that interacts in the way that the virus replicates in the body, and it blocks that replication by inserting into the genetic material and information of the virus and not letting the body express the virus and subsequently replicating. Another modality of the treatment is by convalescent serum or plasma. As we know that the people get infected, the people develop immunoglobulins, as we mentioned before, and those immunoglobulins are protective. And by having people recover from COVID-19, we can extract the plasma or serum and administer to those patients that are in critical condition, and we have seen some positive effects. That treatment modality has been followed and has been done here locally by many of our great physicians and experts that we have caring for our members of our community. The way that we've been doing testing, and we put a picture there so we can see and get a more clear picture of how the testing is because we know that we have that swap. And at the beginning of this pandemic, those swaps were in very short supply. So we needed to take very good care and start testing those that are considered mostly at risk. The way that we see the disease is in several ways, and this is severity seen how we have patients in the hospital, how the characteristics of every patient in the hospital, but also we see how the people in the community are getting affected. This kind of testing is not very comfortable. It's done by health professionals, and we have a wonderful team at the drive-through setting and also through the mobile testing sites. They're taking a sample from the nasal pharynx or in the middle of the nose, trying to get as much virus as we can. We put in a viral transport media, and we send it to the laboratory for processing. As we develop new testing, we can take samples from saliva, but also in critical ill patients, we can do testing on bronchial lavage specimens that are done when the patients have a bronchoscopy or from tracheal aspirates when the patients are intubated and on mechanical ventilation. Going back to the treatment, one of the treatments or one of the armaments that we have to stop a virus is through a vaccine. We have no vaccine available because we have never seen coronavirus affecting so much people and causing so much morbidity and mortality. There are several vaccines that are being developed at this time, and unfortunately, we're not going to have it within a few months, but they're working tirelessly to produce and find an effective vaccine that can help around the world stop those complications and modify mortality around the world as well. There are several ways that vaccines are produced and created. And mainly, the way the vaccine works in the system is by having pieces of the virus presented to our immune system. And our immune system, by having to recognize that small piece of the virus, creates immunity and memory against that virus. So for future exposure, once the body is exposed to the fully strong virus, it will mount an immune response, and it will bring out all those memory antibodies and fight the infection, and it's not going to let the virus attack our body and continue causing damage within the body. Next slide, please. So why do we have to attack this pandemic and attack the virus? Well, the best tools that we have is prevention. Prevention, prevention, prevention is what we have been telling everybody to practice because that's the way that we're going to be able to be victorious against this pandemic. But it takes everybody to do the prevention. One of the main things that we have against these respiratory viruses is going to be social distancing. Social distancing is extremely important because we know that the virus is transmitted through infected droplets coming from infected patients. When we're in communication with other people, the closer we are, the more likely it is that we're going to be exposing other people through our respiratory secretions that are might be infected. And virus can be found in many of us even before we exhibit symptoms. We know that the most infectious period for these patients are a few days before they exhibit symptoms and a few days after they start exhibiting symptoms. So the social distancing is extremely important. We have said that we need to keep a distance of at least six feet, and we need to modify the way that we interact with each other. We said that we are a community based on many family values, and we like to be close to each other. We used to do handshakes to greet people. We used to give hugs when we meet or say goodbye to any of our loved ones. But now we cannot do that because we know that we're going to be putting them at risk. The hygiene education is extremely important. We practice a lot of this hygiene education in the era of the H1N1. And one thing to remember is that schools did a wonderful job with all of our kids because before the H1N1, nobody would cough in the internal part of the elbow until we started teaching the teachers, teaching those school nurses that we need to tell our kids to cover their cough, to wash their hands, don't touch your face because the face is the main door of entrance of any respiratory virus to the body. So by practicing all this, by having your hand sanitizer, that's the way that we're going to be also putting a barrier, and we're going to be preventing us getting infected with all these viruses. And lastly, as we heard, initially, we said, well, face covering. We need to reserve face covering for all the healthcare workers. The face mask and respirators such as N95s definitely are reserved for healthcare workers because those are the ones that are in very close contact with patients. They're caring for them. They're working tirelessly hours caring for all those that are infected with the virus. So also, initially, a lot of the personal protective equipment or PPEs were in short supply, and we needed to save those for those that are caring for those most vulnerable patients that are admitted to the hospitals. But as the infection spread throughout the community, and we saw community spread, then we started recommending everybody wearing their face covering. Why? Because that's the only way that we're going to be preventing those infected secretions from infecting other people surrounding them. But also, the same way as social distancing, we need the participation of everybody. Our community has been very responsive and has been doing wonderfully following all the recommendations that we have done because unfortunately, we have seen some families being shattered by complications of COVID-19 or death within our households. And it is extremely sad to know when somebody dies of COVID-19 and it's something that we could have done to prevent some of this. So the three pieces of prevention, the social distancing, the hygiene education, the face covering, and the participation of everybody is what's going to help us now, but it will continue helping us in the long-term approach to this pandemic. Next slide, please. Looking a little closer and deeper into the COVID-19, we know that it affects equally males and females. But we're seeing a disproportionate amount of males dying from COVID-19 compared to females. Some researchers postulate that that can be related to the protective effects of estrogen that also intervene with those ACE2 receptors, and it doesn't let the virus attach to the cells and start replicating. There's still a lot more research that needs to be done and a lot more learning that we need to gather in regards to the COVID-19 that we will continue seeing new improvements and new research coming out, and we will have a little better understanding of how COVID-19 affects the body and how we're going to be able to attack it in a better way. and how we're going to be able to attack it in a better way. We know that the complications come in those that are considered at high risk. And who are those at-risk groups? Well, those groups are people that are older than 65, people that have complications from other chronic conditions like kidney disease, from diabetes, all the people that have diabetes, especially those that are poorly controlled, people that have high blood pressure or hypertension. Obesity is another one. People that have pulmonary problems, COPD, asthma, people that smoke. Those are considered that are vulnerable and develop more complications from COVID-19. But also, we cannot forget those people that live in congregate settings such as nursing homes, assisted living facilities, correctional facilities, any other setting that has congreg- that has many people in the same place that are considered congregate settings. We have learned that young people generally have very mild symptoms. And that's why we see that we have a very, very low hospitalization rate for those that are young and minors have very low hospitalization rate compared to their older adults. And many of these children develop very, very mild respiratory symptoms, may not have any fever. And then they resolve and they get a lot better. But these children and these young people can be the ones that can bring the virus to other households and others that are considered to be at risk. So therefore, we need to be very careful with everybody who's in our household so we don't bring the virus to some other loved ones that are considered to be in the at-risk group. The incubation period for the virus is between two to 14 days. And people that are considered immunocompromised might not develop the same symptoms and might exhibit and shed the virus a lot sooner than other people that have an intact immune system. We start seeing symptoms developing in a median time of about five to six days. And also getting admitted to the hospital within 10 days of being infected with a virus. As we mentioned before, it spreads from person to person most effectively through the infected droplets. And those infected droplets can remain suspended in the air depending on the environmental conditions. And the patients that are mostly contagious are the pre-symptomatic, which are the ones that are going to exhibit symptoms, but it's a few days before. And also, that are symptomatic. So we cannot let our guard down if we don't feel the symptoms. But if we were exposed to the COVID-19 and we were infected, we might be infecting other people by going outside, by sharing space with other people and gathering. That is the reason why we have sent so many messages as far as the gathering, so many messages of social distancing, messages about caring for our loved ones. Next slide, please. So the three most important steps to stop epidemics, pandemics, is going to be by detecting the virus, identifying those that are having in contact and isolating those that are infected and those that have been in contact. Those are the three most important pieces. And we're going to be hearing a lot more with the rest of the cross-functional team how all the particular information about each one of these very important pieces for the epidemic control. We know that for somebody to get infected, we have a paradigm between the host. We have the infection or the infectious agent and the environment. And the interaction between the three of them is what's going to make somebody a little more susceptible than others. How do we do the testing? Well, as we mentioned before, we need to start testing people to find those that have the virus or that are infected. And at the beginning, we need to be focusing our efforts and doing more targeted testing. As the disease progresses throughout the community, we do a more widespread testing of the community. And we look at different places so we can take representative samples of the whole. Once we identify those that are infected, then we need to identify those that have been in contact with that. And that is the key element of contact tracing. We need to notify them that they were exposed. We need to let them know that they need to be in quarantine. And if they exhibit any symptoms, they also need to be tested. People that have been exposed, depending on the setting, also are going to be tested so we can find more infected individuals after the first exposure. And by isolating everybody that is symptomatic, by isolating those that are infected, we're going to be able to control the way that the pandemic spreads. Because if we have one infectious person out in the community in gathering, it's going to be exposing a lot of people and the pandemic is going to grow exponentially. We have a way to stop it by having the participation of everybody. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. And in a timeline that we have, we know that December 2019, that's when we started hearing about Wuhan, China, and how all these cases were coming about a severe acute respiratory syndrome with high mortality. The world has seen how it spread from China to Asia, to Europe, to the Americas. And with the global traveling, it is extremely easy for infectious agents to disseminate a lot quicker than before. Our first case in El Paso was in March 13. And since then, it has been an abundant of activities to protect our community and aim specifically at protecting our most vulnerable ones as well. With the declaration of local disaster in March 13, it opened a lot of doors for funding. It'll open a lot of doors for many of the other activities that needed to be taking place. And I'm very grateful from the city council and mayor from approaching this pandemic in that way. Also, the cooperation with the county of El Paso and the city attorney's office, how they were able to work together to have similar declarations and similar orders in place aimed, again, at protect our community. Also, the governor Abbott declared a disaster around the same time on March 13. And we submitted some health authority orders initially for the schools. And the schools, because our children, they needed to be also protected. But in the same way, it's a way to protect the older loved ones that are considered at risk. Unfortunately, we had our first death on April 8, 2020. And since then, we have seen an increased number of people dying from complications of COVID-19. COVID-19 is still going to be in our community. And unfortunately, many of our loved ones are going to be suffering those complications and ultimately are going to succumb to that. But hopefully, we can continue doubling our efforts in trying to prevent this from happening. We started reopening Texas with the governor's orders, as Ms. Niemann said. And since then, midnight, April 30 or May 1, we will continue opening some of the businesses in Texas. And we'll continue balancing public health with economics and how we can continue recover from this pandemic. Next slide, please. Looking a little bit more in the demographics of our community, we know that people within 18 and 64 years of age is the largest group in our county. And by looking at that, we know that we are a very young community. We have a lot of families. And unfortunately, we have multi-generational households, especially in the outskirts of the city and in the county areas. Thirty-five percent of our population are considered minors, younger than 18. And we have many times our extended family caring for those children because people that are able to work are out there working and trying to support the families. Next slide, please. With this graphic, we're trying to depict how the population and demographics of our county and city compared to how we're seeing on the positive cases within our city and county. As we see, the 18 to 64 years of age is the H bracket that is mostly affected by positive cases. And also, in the minors, younger than 18 years of age, it's a very small representation of positive cases. And this might be due either because of not exhibiting symptoms and we haven't tested those minors or also because a lot of us have been caring for our young ones and have been keeping them home. They're not gathering, they're not having their birthday parties, they're not having other kind of gatherings. And therefore, they're not being exposed to the virus and they're not getting sick. We have been very fortunate as not having many admissions to the hospital because of COVID-19. And there is a very severe syndrome that has been described in children, the multi-syndrome inflammatory syndrome of childhood, which is causing a great concern within our pediatric medical community. We're very vigilant about those. And hopefully, we don't see cases of that in our community. We're seeing that people that are older than 65 are also being affected by the virus. And about 15% of the positive cases have been that. And unfortunately, in in few slides, we're going to see the mortality, how it compares that the older the age group, the higher the risk of dying from complications of COVID-19. Next slide, please. As we break down by ethnicity and race, we know that El Paso has the highest ethnicity is the Hispanics with over 80%, followed by white, non-Hispanic races. And we have very small representation of other races and ethnicities here in El Paso. Next slide, please. And again, here making a comparison in how the positive cases, race and ethnicity, is being compared to the demographics of the city and the county. We see that Hispanics are mostly affected and followed by whites, non-Hispanics, and also African-Americans. We need to mention that what we see as demographics and how the disparities of the virus in the country, we know that African-Americans and Hispanics are being disproportionately affected. But here in El Paso is no different. But also because we have a disproportionate share of Hispanic and we're predominantly a Hispanic community. Next slide, please. But we cannot forget about the other ethnicities and other races. And we all need to protect each other. We all need to be watching out for our neighbors, our loved ones and everybody that is around us. Gender breakdown within the community, we are equally males and females. Next slide, please. And the way that the virus has been affected also in positive cases in our community has been very representative of what we have in the community as far as the gender breakdown. We see that the virus doesn't have any predominance of male or female. But we will see as far as the mortality, how we're seeing a disproportionate affection of males compared to females. Next slide, please. What are the health indicators within the El Paso county? Well, mainly, we have people with high blood pressure and diabetes. We know that also, looking at the country as a whole, we have diabetes and high blood pressure being very prevalent within our minorities, especially African-American and Hispanics. And one thing that we need to battle here in the border city and here in our town is that we have a very high proportion of patients with no health insurance. Next slide, please. In overall, one out of four might not have insurance. But here, when we see the positive cases, we see that one out of three of the positive cases don't have any insurance. And unfortunately, if those people have any health conditions, they're going to be disproportionately affected. And they're going to be the ones that are going to be developing complications because they are not able to go seek medical attention to control their chronic conditions. And therefore, they might not be able to go and seek medical attention when they start feeling sick from COVID-19. We see that high blood pressure in our county is a number one, followed by diabetes. But it's very similar the way that the positive cases affect the people with high blood pressure and diabetes or the way that we have found them. We know that cardiovascular disease is another big one. And the way that we eat and the way that we exercise or not exercise have a lot to do with developing heart disease or coronary artery disease, diabetes, high blood pressure. High blood pressure may be also a complication of the diabetes as well. Next slide, please. And the number of comorbidities, even though many people have one, but you can have many of these comorbidities. And we see that almost half of the population here in the county and the city have more than one comorbidities. So we need to be extra careful with all of those message that we have sent and education we have done in regards to keeping our most vulnerable ones safe by bringing them the medication, by being able to take them to see their medical provider and control those chronic conditions so we can get them in shape and being able to fight an infection in case they become infected. Next slide, please. Touching a little bit about the testing. We've done quite a bit of testing. From the beginning, we were doing little because of the limitations that we have by the FDA, CDC restrictions because we needed to have very strict criteria and how we're going to be able to test those people in our laboratory that was initially approved to be doing the very complex testing. And in the next graph, we're going to be seeing how the testing has increased by week and the tests that have been done per 100,000 of population. Next slide, please. If we see a nice increase by weeks and we're following up on the CDC weeks, and it's a very well-established way to keep track of many of the conditions and indicators if we follow the CDC weeks. But if we see how we have dramatically increased the way that we've been testing our community and we're reaching our goals that we have set and setting up those mobile testing, setting up and increasing the capacity of our laboratory and our testing sites have helped us tremendously continue looking at the community and how many of these members of our community have been infected with the virus by doing the PCR testing. Some of the cross-functional team are going to be touching a lot more and describe many more of the details as far as the testing in later presentations. Next slide, please. By standardizing the testing and how we're finding the positives in the testing that we've been doing, we can see very sharply how during these weeks, the number of testing that have been done has reached over 100 tests per day, per 100,000 population. One indicator that we're also looking at is the positivity rate. If the positivity rate continues climbing, then we will be having a lot of problems. If the positivity rate continues climbing, then we will be having a lot of problems. Experts have mentioned that when positivity rate reaches over 20%, we will be considered a hotspot. But fortunately, we have remained, for the most part, below 10%. We want to continue seeing this positivity rate below the 10%. And as more testing continues and more people we find positive, hopefully, we don't find that positivity rate going up higher than 10%. We will continue doing widespread testing, but also targeted testing, the same way that we've been doing with correctional facilities and nursing homes, assisted living facilities. We have given priority to testing in patients for, that have been admitted to the hospital because we're very interested in seeing how severe the disease is in our community. Next slide, please. In the next slide, we're going to be seeing some of the total cases that we have seen and how it has increased through time since the first patient that we found positive. And we're going to be looking at the doubling rate and the effectiveness or the transmission rate. Next slide. Since case number one, we've seen how the curve has been going with an upward trend. And it's quite difficult to predict what is going to happen with the number of positives. And we have a wide range. As the time goes by, the numbers on the left has been the positive cases. But the shadow area on the right is how it can be predicted that it can go. Can we bring it down lower? Yes, we can. But it's, again, a work for everybody and a work in the collaboration between all the stakeholders. And all the stakeholders is everybody in the community, from government to private entities to education facilities, either higher education or K-12. Every single member of the community can help decrease the spreading, help decrease the number of cases that we have in our community. Next slide, please. The way that we've seen the doubling rate of cases, if we see that it was having a small area of not increasing, but what we want to see on the doubling rate is that as we control the way that the pandemic spreads, our doubling rate starts rising because we have a lot more days from doubling from one number to the next one. So this upward trend is what we want to see and continue seeing as the days go by and we continue looking for more cases. But we see that we don't have that many positive cases in our community. Next slide. That has an inverse relationship with the transmission rate that instead of going up, is going down and has remained stable as we see here in this table. Next slide, please. We're going to look a little bit more as far as the positive cases and divided by age and gender. And even though the 60% of the cases are in people younger than 40 years of age, females are equally affected than males in all ages. And unfortunately, even though the cases are in small proportion in older people, but we're going to see that the higher proportion of deaths are in the older age group, older age bracket. Next slide, please. This demographic pyramid can show us how, because of our community is built between people from 18 to 64 years of age. And we see that they're mostly being affected, males and females being almost equally affected in the positivities or in the positive cases and how we divided by male and female. Next slide, please. We look at the hospital admissions. And here, that's when we're starting seeing that the hospital admissions are more common in males. We have seen a steady increase. And we have seen increases in hospitalization rates that happen after certain events such as holidays. We've seen how after holidays, we send increase in hospitalization rates, we see increase in positive cases. And in the overall admissions to the hospital, 50% are on people older than 60 years of age. Next slide, please. This graphic also shows very well how we have seen an increase in hospitalizations and admissions by week. And it has been increasing steadily since. And we see some sharp increases. And those might be due to some of the holidays that we have mentioned before. Next slide. In the admissions by age, as mentioned before, about 60% of the admissions are in people 60 and older. Even though we have some admissions on younger people, but they're not very common. Next slide, please. In forecasting the hospital admissions, even though we see an upward trend, it's extremely hard to predict what's going to be happening in regards to the hospital admissions. The line that is, looks like a jagged line. It has been all the spikes and all the hospitalizations that we've seen throughout these weeks. And the shaded areas is from predicted models. And if we see that it has a very wide variability in how we can see it in the future. Next slide. Our cumulative hospitalization rate also has continued to increase. But hopefully, we can see that it continues in and not some upward trend. Next slide, please. Now going to the deaths and mortality rates, we're going to see how the older we are, the more likely it is that somebody is going to die, especially if they have any underlying health conditions. Next slide, please. The COVID-related deaths, we see that it happens very disproportionately between males and females. And we have a lot more males than females dying from complications of COVID-19 here in our city. The older we are, the more likely it is that people can die from complications. And here's, we can see it very clearly. Fortunately, we have not seen any pediatric mortality due to COVID-19 or younger people. The youngest members of our community that have passed away to COVID-19 complications have had underlying conditions. So we need to be extremely careful with all those. Next slide. The mortality rate by age group, we can see what has happened across the country. The older we are, the more likely it is that we're going to die. And we have a very high proportion of people dying when they're older than 70 years of age. And it has the vast majority of the cases in those three age brackets. Next slide, please. Here in this pie, we see how the age group separated by the deaths by age group. And three-fourths of those deaths have been about older than 50 years of age. So we need to be extremely cautious. This is just a very good representation on how we need to be caring for our elders. Next slide, please. We see a disproportionate share of males and females as far as the deaths. And we have a ratio of two to one in the deaths, males to females. Next slide, please. The underlying health conditions at the time of death, 65%, close to 65% of the people have had high blood pressure as an underlying condition. Half of the people that have died have had diabetes. Others have had heart conditions, lung conditions, kidney, and some other kinds of cancer. Next slide, please. Then if we see the line in green, the case fatality rate, even though it has an upward trend, hopefully, we continue seeing a decrease. And this last week, we saw that our case fatality rate has dropped to 2.4 approximately. Our mortality rate standardized to 100,000 of population also continue rising. But hopefully, we will be able to control this by all the measures that have been instituted. We need to continue planning and we need to continue without letting our guard down. Next slide, please. The doubling rate for deaths also has had an upward trend, which is favorable. And that's what we want to see, that we don't want to see double the number of deaths in a very short period of time. So we want to see that it spreads and continues being longer and longer the time it takes to double the rate of deaths. Next slide, please. So what is next for El Paso in regards to COVID-19? We know that we're going to be living with the virus for quite a bit of time. We don't know how we're going to be able to tackle the virus, if there's going to be medications available. We're hoping that we should have the vaccine available at a later time, hopefully soon. And with a vaccine, that can be a game changer because the vaccine is going to be giving us the opportunity to protect the most vulnerable ones. But also having a widespread immunization program throughout the community. So we'll be able to protect all age groups and all members of our community with this important tool. We need to continue the planning for returning to school and returning to work. How can we do it to make it in a safe environment? How can we do it to continue monitoring the situation? And we will look very closely at influenza-like illness rates in our schools because that's an indicator of how our kids and our households are getting infected by not just the COVID-19, but many of the other respiratory viruses that we're going to be encountering this coming winter season. We need to plan for a second wave. The second wave is coming. Once we have people bring down their guards and they don't practice much of the social distancing by not following those hygiene recommendations that we have given. If vaccine is available and people don't get vaccinated, that's when we're going to see a spike in cases of the COVID-19 in our community. The next flu season is going to pose a great challenge to us. But with the community efforts and involvement of all the stakeholders, we will be able to get through this. Next slide, please. We need to continue observing fiscal responsibility with the resources that we have. We need to apply them in the correct way and we need to put them to work so we can continue showing that fiscal responsibility. And as always, the balance between public health and the economy, how we can re-establish the economy in the most secure and the safe way. So we will continue protecting the health and well-being of our community. And that has been one of the missions that we need to do by the cross-functional team and how we can approach this problem in a local way with many local talent that we have throughout all our stakeholders. And with that, I thank you very much. And we will continue the presentation.
Mayor, I'd like to say that when Dr. O talks about some local talent, he's one of those people that are very talented here in our region. He actually grew up in Juarez, Juarez, and he did his residency here in El Paso, opened up his practice in Anthony because they had no services in the area. So Dr. O is an extremely talented and educated and highly experienced individual who really cares deeply about our region and has demonstrated that not only in his word, but in his deeds as well. So we've done a, we've not done a very good job of showcasing him, but he's done an incredible job leading this entire public health effort for our community.